All right, at 6:30, we'll call the Monday, August 23rd, 2021 regular city council meeting to order. If we could start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda tonight?
I'm requesting to remove 6B1, the change order request, the reels for the fire station.
Okay. A motion to approve the agenda with the removal of 6B1 change order request for reels for the fire station.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries four zero. It'll take us public comments, if there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent agenda, is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries four zero, that will take us, say one, please Maggie.
All right, so Mayor Dodge and council in front of you this evening is some information about the low-income household water assistance program that's funded by the federal government and administrated through the Minnesota Commerce Department. So a little background, in response to COVID-19, Congress created an emergency water assistance program to assist those with lowest incomes who have a high proportion of their income go towards their water and sewer utilities. So the total amount that they put into this program was $638 million. The state of Minnesota received $4,666,970. So this program will be starting on October 1st for applications and will go through September 30th, 30th of 2022. But it has been stressed that these funds are very limited and are projected to be used before that September 2022 date. So property owners would, how it works is the property owners would apply for the program through the program site and when we market it, we will make that site available. And then payments will be made directly to the water supplier and that, in our case, is the city of mayor. So the program will and can pay for past due water or current water and sewer utility charges of up to $1,200. So I did include some prioritization that they've, a list that they've put together that will help them determine who will be the priority in this program. So currently, those who are disconnected, those pending disconnection and those with a past due bill. So how this city needs to participate in this program is that we have to complete some documentation that acknowledges our responsibilities in the program. So we will, if we do get a resident that applies, we would then be contacted to provide that information about their utility, them as a utility customer. So that documentation would be completed if approved by the city council. We would also actively market and let residents know on social media and and I would, I would think our newsletter as well that goes with our utility bills, that this program is available. So with that, I'm recommending that the city council approve resolution 8-23-21-29. That would approve the city of mayor to participate in the water assistance program. And it would allow me to move forward with completing that documentation so that we can participate. So with that, I am available for any questions on the program.
Any questions for the administrator?
Is it like $1,200 per household?
It's per household, yep.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. Then with that, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 8-23-21-29, the low-income household water assistance program.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion?
This isn't a ton of work, right Maggie? I mean, we're gonna fill out this form and then you may have to answer some questions, you or Janelle.
Right, right, yep, so essentially, if we do get residents that apply, they'll contact us, have us verify the information. And then how we get paid is through our SWIFT account and that's how we get all of our other state funds, like local government aid, so we would just use that account and it would get deposited in our account. So very minimal administrative work.
Okay.
Are there plans to contact residents individually who we know who are behind in their bills now?
Yeah, I think that that approach would be best. I've heard other communities that have put together more specific lists that they target that audience more directly. So we'll probably get some letters to, to let them know about this program.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Post same sign, motion carries four zero. All right, city council reports, council member Melander, anything to report on?
No, the planning commission didn't meet this month, we didn't have anything to discuss and I still haven't heard from the Watertown mayor community yet, but as soon as I do, I will attend that meeting and I will be attending the September 7th planning commission meeting.
Thank you, council member Wagner.
At the end of July, I attended the CCL leaders meeting for the first time. There's a lot of people there, it's a little technical challenge, but it was good. They just went over some of the parks and they talked about some of the COVID-19 spending of that money. So.
Glad you were able to attend, thank you. Council member McNeil, anything to report on?
Nope.
Nope, and I do not either, at this time, we do have a personnel committee meeting tomorrow morning. So I'll have more at the next council member, or council meeting. And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we are adjourned. All right, Maggie, then we can, we might as well jump right into the city council workshop meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and start with number two, please.
All right, mayor and council, as you know, I've been providing some recommend, or some updates on the compost site to you, lately, we have been, we have been having some issues with illegal dumping on the site. And so, just a little history, as you know, we've always had, or for quite some time, we had a person that would sit on site during the regular hours. They did resign at the beginning of the summer. And so with that, we've been coordinating with Carver County and Public Works to keep the site open on a regular basis. We hadn't been having too many issues, we just kind of wanted to monitor and see what would happen if we, if we didn't have somebody there all the time. We did have some oversight though from staff checking in on it from time to time. So recently, however, we did have some illegal dumping happen. We did notice on social media that if it continued to happen, that we would consider different operation or review operations and maybe make some changes. So recently, staff has been talking to Carver County about the future goals of the site. We, and, and the vision. We do feel that this is a benefit to the community. I've been out there on Wednesday and Saturday and I know people use it a lot. And I think that with that, I, I, I think we need to keep it open and we need to find ways to, to keep this accessible to the public. So again, those illegal, those items that were illegally dumped, those are, those, those are items that end up costing the city and the county money because they are unbudgeted items that we have to then get rid of. And so after a lot of discussion between staff and the county, we did decide that we would, that cameras would be a benefit, but we also think that staffing, having a regular staff person there as well would be beneficial to, along with getting more detailed signs up. So the goal of tonight is to have a discussion with the council on the future hours and staffing needs and to discuss any other vision or goals for this site. I know in the past, we've talked about expanding hours. We have talked to the county about that. Again, with expanding hours, we would need to consider additional staffing as well. So right now, one suggestion that the county is offering, because we, we want this to be a coordinated effort. We, we know that if we, we put this out for somebody to, to work, that it might not always be the ideal hours for somebody to sit out there, especially on Saturday mornings. And so I guess that's something we need to consider. Could we find somebody that would, that would be willing to sit out there on, on Saturdays? Or do we need to come up with another solution? I know one solution the county came up with was that they would consider or ask the council to move the opening during the week from Wednesday to Thursday. Wednesday, right now, is five to eight, they would suggest or recommend going from two to six. And then they would be able to staff it throughout the, the summer months. But then that leaves the city with staffing it on the weekends throughout the entire year. And so I'm, I guess I'm open for ideas. At a staff level, we talked about posting for this position. Again, maybe with the hopes that a young person or retired person would work it. But we know that there are people who want their weekends as well. And so whether it's a rotating position or, or what, that's something we would have to decide. One discussion we had too is that we did put out, we did post a position for the Public Works for the summer, we didn't get anybody applying. So I know that that's something that a lot of cities are struggling with as well for these part-time positions. So I guess my question to you is, what have you been hearing? What are your, what would you like to see for this site? And then with that, I, I would recommend bringing it to the Public Works Department slash Personnel for further discussion on, on the staffing part of it. But before I do that, I'd like to get an idea of the current hours and schedule that it's open before we look at staffing it.
Thoughts, and that was kind of me and Maggie did talk about that, we thought it really should, we should have a co-meeting with Public Works and, and Personnel Committee. But we did want to get input, you know, people are very opposed to changing hours and we won't focus so much on that. Or do you want us to just kind of get a plan together and bring it? But we want to make sure to try to capture anything if there was plus or minuses that you'd want to see or didn't want to see that you want us to take into account.
I would say moving the day probably is okay, it would just take some, getting used to you. The two to six, I mean, a lot of people work, so closing at six might be a little tough for people that utilize it on the evenings but are gone on the weekends in the summer. So, but could you try to do, the county does two to six and we still leave it open till eight, six to eight and have somebody sitting out there for two hours and just change it to Thursdays? And then, then it gives people more, a longer opportunity Thursday, if they can start manning it at two. That's not, could be something. I think you should post again, I know that the summer was rough for a lot of places, but I know a lot of things are ending. So maybe people would be willing to look for that part-time work.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that, that I think the intent of Wednesdays was to have that evening hours for people who wouldn't make Saturdays, so I agree that we should have it open.
But I wouldn't be opposed to changing the day and then just doing two to eight and then we have to find someone from six to eight.
Right.
And on the days that maybe we, it fell through, we would just close at six and just say, I'm sorry, this week we are done at six. If, like for something, somebody couldn't, the person wasn't able to work that day. That's my.
Personally, I'd like to see it open a little later on, on Saturdays than noon too. I, I just feel it's hard for people to get out there, get their yard work done, get everything collected and then get there by noon. That seems a little early to me.
But are we, I mean, are we willing to like do more?
You know, for summer.
Do more hours during the summer, just knowing that and then pay somebody? Are we, you know, and budget that extra?
I think we should, I think we should.
What do people take out there in the winter?
Then it's more recycling.
Just the, okay.
Recycling gets used a lot, a lot of people utilize it.
But that at a once a week on a Saturday morning is probably fine.
Yep.
Right.
I think the hours for this, for the winter are fine.
Okay, so.
And I'm fine with a camera if we feel a camera's needed, but I think if we haven't staffed, we didn't, we didn't have many problems prior, did we? Maggie, when, when it was staffed?
For illegal dumping, no.
Well, the staff member would be able to provide additional resource if, if someone was unable to understand what the signs were saying on what was allowed and what wasn't allowed.
Yeah, I know when I've been out there, I've gotten out and people have actually come up and asked questions about, if they were unsure if there was something that was recyclable or if we had the ability to recycle it.
And if someone's there, you're less likely to leave something you're not supposed to.
Any other specific topics you want us to work on or address or try to find a solution for? All right.
So it sounds like expanding hour, hours a little bit more during the summer months. And then posting, posting and see if we get anybody, we will bring that back to you for approval.
I think we should really look at the, the, the pay, I mean, $10 an hour to sit on, yeah, it's a real, I know you don't have to do much, but $10 an hour is not really incentive for anybody even, even a younger person.
So with the county staffing it from two to six, then they're paying that person?
Yeah, so it would be their staff that would do it, yep, so they pay that. Ours is usually paid a little, like half of, out of our general fund and then half for grant. So we, the county is looking into whether they can get additional grant funding for 2022. But historically, we've paid for it, split between grant money and general fund.
Yeah, I think we need.
So does that mean we're paying like $20 an hour? And our portion is 1008 and the?
No, so we've been paying, I'm sorry, what I, what I, clarification is that we've funded that ten, the amount, that ten, that $10 salary through those revenue sources, we've levied a little bit, but we've also applied for grant funds to cover it.
Okay.
It was just the $10 an hour. But the county didn't have anybody staffing it, we had the full-time staff person out there.
So if they staffed part of it and we increased the pay, we're still even?
Yeah, it would, I mean, it would probably balance out. And if, if for, they, for whatever reason, they were able to find more grant money, then we could look into what that means as well, but right now, that's not a guarantee.
And would we consider hiring more than one person to have every other weekend and not have it?
Yeah, I think it's something we need to consider as a backup person, because I know that weekends are a busy time for people and I know people are gonna need that time off, so. That's a discussion we can have at the personnel level and public works level.
Yeah, I would say especially in the summer.
All right, should we move to the sheriff's contract?
All right, Mayor Dodge and council, in front of you is a 2022 police contract. So I'm bringing this to you this evening as we start to work on our contracts for the 2022 budget. So we were given the numbers for the 2022 contract. At a previous council meeting, we did discuss the hours. For the rest of this year, we decided we would keep the summer hours for the remainder of this year. And then for 2022, we would continue on with the four 10-hour rotating hours. So that will come to you at a future council meeting for approval. I will likely bring it with this contract once we're, we have looked through it. This contract is very similar to other contracts, not much has changed. Right now, the contract is written as us having one FTE or full-time employee with the city of New Germany. So we have .88 of that contract, New Germany has .12. So that is what we've historically budgeted for, if we stay with the .88 coverage, we will see a drop just based on their, their numbers that they provided of $3,439. So we also, within our contract, receive 130 hours of community service officer hours. We also budget for the Southwest Metro Drug Task Force for 2,100. And so with that, I did highlight kind of the historical numbers that we've had, this contract would go down for 2022. So I, I am open for any questions as far as the contract. I want to, I, my goal for this evening was to provide the budget numbers as we start to finalize some of those numbers. We do have to pass our preliminary budget at the end of September. And so I'm just trying to get some, some more preliminary numbers for that budget. So this, this contract, again, I did provide the preliminary contract and resolution that would approve that contract for your review and I am available for any questions on either of those.
We changed it to .88, was it last year or is it 2020?
Uh, 2020.
Yeah, 2020, we had a big discussion, the last, just, you know, do we do a full-time person or not? And I've been very happy with the .88 and especially with the decrease too. And then I've been really happy with the hours in our previous discussion that we had.
So when we were at .67, did New Germany have the rest of that as, and then they just gave up? Okay.
Sorry, you can answer that question, but.
Oh, no, that's.
Yeah, they had, they always had and I think it went to them first to see if they were okay with the decrease.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Maggie, we do get reimbursed for the CSO hours that are not used?
We do.
No, I'm, I'm good, I, I like the decrease, I'm very happy with the hours in the .88, I, I'm fine with it.
So that's still patrol until 10 o'clock at night?
Yep, yep, so we, for 2022, we will be doing the two to 10, the four two to 10 shifts that rotate one week from Tuesday to Friday and then the other week Wednesday.
It's noon to 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, noon to 10.
It's four 10-hour days.
I apologize, yep.
And our deputy came in and discussed last meeting and just said that he felt that that was a good rotation, he gave him enough hours in the day to get his normal business work done and also be out in the community. And he felt that a lot of times, there was not a lot of activity after 10 PM.
That's what I read, like he said something about the town shuts down and said, like he thought maybe 10 was too long or something, or?
I think he was okay, he liked the four 10s. And that was, and then that we, we always got a Sat, like two Saturdays a month. But it allowed him more time during the day, the 10 hours, when it was an eight-hour shift, it was just more rushed to try to get a lot of that paperwork and from what I, this is how I interpreted the conversation.
But we're okay to have three days with no one here?
Yeah, we always have on-call, I mean, we have area cars, I mean, we still have coverage, we just don't have someone in town. That's worked out, it seems to have worked out great this summer and based on the numbers and, and from the reports on what happens earlier in the week.
I, on Sundays, I a lot of times see a deputy driving our neighborhood on a Sunday, it's not our officer, so. Even if we went to full-time, we would still not have coverage every day.
Right.
We'd have to add another deputy, which would be quite substantial, but at this time, this was, this is working.
I'm good with it. Any other questions, discussions, thoughts on it?
If there's anything that comes up, I know we're having a kind of a session with the sheriff's department on the contract. So they're asking for any comments. Anything comes up, just let me know, but.
And the deputy will change, is that accurate?
And with that rotation too, the, you know, he's pretty flexible and again, not that Deputy Hendricks will be our deputy next year, we're not sure of that yet. But they've been real flexible and then it's nice on those weekends, if we do have big events going on on Saturday, they'll, they'll be, they'll fluctuate, change their schedules, they're here. You know, if it's city celebration, national night out or, or if one of the local establishments having a, a big event or things, then they'll, they'll adjust and be there for that, so it works out well.
We could get a different deputy then, huh?
We, we may, we don't, we don't know yet who our deputy is, correct?
No.
It seems to change every two years, every year, every two years. It seems to change every two year, every year, every two years. All right, anything else on that? Then we will, Maggie, should we go to C right now, or do you wanna?
Yeah, I'll go to the, I'll skip to the 2022 budget review, because I'm not seeing-
We're waiting for our IT person to, uh, come present, so let's talk about C then, the 2022 budget update.
Um, so Mayor and Council, I just wanted to provide you with additional information as we continue to work on the 2022 budget. So at the July twenty-sixth City Council Workshop, we did discuss our vision and goals for 2022. Uh, since that meeting, staff's been working on the budget numbers. And I will go through my PowerPoint. Uh, since then, and I won't go through all of this in detail, because, as you know, we've reviewed this already. Uh, how we, uh, get our general fund, so we do, I'll, I'll do a quick overview. So we do, most of our general fund is funded through, uh, state aid, fees, fines, and permits, and then property taxes. And then we also have our enterprise fund, and we will be, um, working through the, those funds, uh, in the next month. Right now, we need to get, uh, the preliminary budget set, uh, because we need to pass that and adopt it by the end of September and certify it to the county. Um, for new council members, um, the preliminary levy, uh, once it's passed, it can, it can be lowered, but it cannot be raised. And so when we're going through this process, we generally shoot a little higher, um, than what our final will be. So we have our preliminary numbers, and then we kind of go through those in more detail and lower those as in the, uh, between September and December. But yeah, once you set that levy, you cannot, uh, increase it. Um, so, we do have the opportunity, uh, based on the preliminary property tax numbers that we pass. We have a truth in taxation meeting, and that will be on December thirteenth. So that allows, uh, property owners to have the opportunity to comment on the preliminary numbers and provide their feedback to the council. And then this year, our final budget adoption will likely be December thirteenth or twentieth, depending on if we need any changes after the truth in taxation public hearing. So historically, our, these have been our, uh, rates uh, for the past decade or so. Uh, last year, our final was forty-nine point zero nine percent. Right now, uh, my preliminary is at forty-nine point three. That was one of our goals, was to keep it very close to, um, the last few years. So this gives you a compare, a, a little bit of a comparison for this year, where we were compared to other cities for 2021. I'm just gonna expand this a little bit. So right now, and I did include the breakdown of how I got these numbers in your packet, so if you have any questions, let me know. But, um, right now, our general operating expenditures for, for this year is a little lower than last year's. So it's about one million sixty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars and nineteen cents. It's about, uh, about nine thousand dollar difference.
Maggie, what's, what was the column on the right?
That's the percentage, uh, that, e-, of each category, how much of the budget it, percentage it makes up. So general government is for 2022 is about currently, what I'm proposing at forty-four point four percent of the, um. That's where the budget breakdown is, so most of our, uh, budget is within general government. And then if you go down, twenty-six point nine is in public safety.
Is that just police and fire?
Uh, yeah, so that's police, fire, I can look, yeah, so that, yeah, pretty much just police and fire. And, um, I think there's some smaller categories, like animal control, and, but yeah, mostly police and fire. So with that, I did provide the budget change from last year. The dollar amount, and I did include a little, a little explanation, um, of why you will see those changes. So, uh, general government, we did have, uh, three percent wage increases, and slight benefit increases for staff. Uh, public safety, there was a slight decrease in the police contract cost, and then small cost increases for the fire department. Again, those are, um, things that we're discussing, uh, at a personnel level right now, is fire department wages, so, uh, based on those decisions, the budget will, will change. So those are just things that we're working on before the final budget. Public works, the three percent wage increase, and then slight benefit increases. But, um, we're also bringing snow operations in-house, so that's where you'll see the significant decrease, um, in, in that number, because we don't have the high, uh, the contract cost for this year. Uh, and then park and rec, again, wages and benefits. Uh, last year, we had a, the, uh, one-time roundabout project cost that we don't have for this year, and we don't have any specific special projects in 2022 that, that we have planned for. Uh, and then compost, we are planning for additional hours. We did reduce a little bit, but we, um, again, we need to work through that, and if we do move forward with more hours, we're looking for grant money for that, to cover that.
So that we budget more in expenses for payroll with the snow removal being in-house?
Yeah, so we, um, we budget for overtime. And so I specifically budget for, um, I go on the high end, but I do the highest public work salary, and I times that by, um, a hundred overtime hours for the entire public works department. So I usually go, again, I do the higher one, because we don't know, you know, which, which person will be working overtime, but I tend to, um, since we are taking it in-house, yes, we will, we'll be budgeting for more overtime. But based on staff discussions, we feel that it'll be pretty consistent with other years, because, um, public works, uh, through those discussions, used to come in at the same time as the contractor anyways. So we don't think that it'll be a large budget increase from previous years.
Okay.
Um, we do have some money still for as needed, just in case, but it, it, that number did go down significantly, since we will not be using a contractor. Um, as far as debt service, um, you'll see that ours actually went down. So, um, again, these are, this is our debt schedule. We don't have our full, uh, street project. Um, this is, this, uh, next year will be the first year that we start paying on our street project, and that's in interest only. Our fire station is the same, we did narrow that one down. But again, that one is interest only, because we planned our, that project around debt falling off in the future, and then, so then in 2024, we will take on the full amount. Some revenue overview, so we, we're anticipating again twenty to twenty-five houses in 2022. Historically, we have had, uh, between thirty and thirty-five. I did lower it a little bit. To date, we've only, we've had ten houses, so that's for 2021, that's lower than we expected, partly because, uh, a development that we expected to, to be active right now is, has not, uh, gotten through the, gotten to that point yet, and so we have not seen that development build any houses. But we do expect it to be active in 2022. And then local government aid, we did see an increase about, of about seven thousand six hundred forty-five dollars. So, as you can tell, our RC, we run a balanced budget, so anything that we, any expenditure amount that we have for our operating, we have to match it with our revenues. So, this is the preliminary revenue schedule, so we, our property taxes are, uh, well, this is the breakdown between property taxes, what we think fees, licenses, and permits will come in, our aids and grants, fire contracts and other. Um, so that's, that's, that's how it's breaking down right now. And stop me if you have any questions throughout this process, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then, again, um, I know last year, we started off high in our capital levy, our preliminary capital levy, and I'm starting off high again. This is the area where we can actually decrease the most, but, um, right, last year, we did levy two hundred and fifteen thousand for capital projects. These are projects, uh, or these are funds for either projects or capital items such as equipment that we are planning to purchase in the future. It aligns with our long-term plan, and so, um, really, it's about building up those funds so that we, we can, uh, pay for those projects in the long-term plan that are on that schedule. Or, um, we can, uh, or, I lost my train of thought. Yeah, so it's, it's building up those funds for those large expenditure items, and then we don't have to levy those large amounts in the general operating fund. So, um, just wanted to provide you with some information we, that we got from the county last week. Sorry, it's kind of hard to see, but, uh, last, this is our, um, breakdown of what our assessment, um, market value came in at. So we are, we saw growth of seven percent in the city last year, so we saw seven point four-six in residential. We actually saw a decrease in commercial. Um, but our net is seven point zero one percent, so we did see a significant growth, which is good, uh, for the city. We are grow, continuing to grow. Um, and then this, I just showed kind of how we've increased, um, in, in dollar amounts. So, that seven percent is, equates to about fourteen million nine hundred forty-one, um, in market value for the city, and then as a tax, for tax capacity, that's about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, and the net tax capacity is, that, that's the number that we're able to tax against for property. And then, this just breaks down our, again, our preliminary general fund for, that we are, um, what we would levy for, for property taxes, so that's that four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And then the capital currently sits at three hundred fifty thousand. And then our levy for debt. And so, the one, this number is not completely accurate, because first, for some reason, there's a delay from the state in our fiscal disparity numbers, and so they've asked us to use our, our last year's numbers, just for education, or just to, uh, because they, they said it should be pretty close to those numbers, but just to give us an idea of what our tax rate would come in at. But those numbers should be out into the cities in a couple weeks. But based on last year's numbers, we're, I'm sitting at forty-nine point three percent, um, for our preliminary, uh, tax rate. Again, this kind of gives you the numbers of how I got that, that percentage. Um, and then just a little bit more information, last year, we had, our net growth was two point two-nine, and again, this year, seven points zero one, so you can see that it did grow significantly. Um, and then, and then our tax levy percentage change, so I am a right around that, the final range of last year, which was forty-nine point zero nine. So that is kind of where we're at with the budget. Um, I wanted to provide, and then in your packet is there, is a more detailed breakout of each line item and how I got those numbers. Um, so I'm open to any, any questions or feedback. Um, I think I'm pretty confident in those numbers, um, again, for preliminary reasons. I'm going to, it's always gonna be a little bit higher. And, but, as we work on some final planning for 2022, um, we will, that will definitely go down.
All right, any comments, questions for Maggie? I think this is great work so far up to now, Maggie, you've done a great job, but it looks like it's coming in right where we're gonna want it to. My only question on the street funds. Haven't we talked about using a hundred thousand dollars annually for that?
Yeah, so I know last year, um, because of, uh, some of the growth, or we didn't see the growth come in where we wanted to, I think the discussion we had was to, to narrow it back, or to reduce it. Um, the one reason I put it at seventy-five thousand is we're expecting potential, um, uh, the transportation bill at the state level is starting to fund, um, small cities' streets again. And so as I, I, I did provide an update recently, though, there were, there was money that came in. And so, um, I did put, just taking that into consideration, that we would be around that forty potentially again, and that's where that money would go. Um, I did, based on other projects that we're looking at within these other departments, I did lower that, knowing that we would be getting that money in.
Anything else? Oh, I think it looks good. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, any, if anything comes up, just contact me.
Right. Okay, thank you. Then we'll go back to re, uh, be the security cameras and door access.
All right. Uh, Mayor and Council, so, uh, tonight, we're gonna be discussing a, uh, the planning for a campus, city campus, city-wide cam, security camera and door access system. So right now, we do have, uh, for ea-, what we're thinking, um, I've been working with IT and staff on developing a concept, for increased security, and that, again, that would include cameras and door axes. Um, so that would be the scan, scan cards, and, um, and then the software that goes with it, that would track, uh, any movement into public buildings. Um, so right now, we do have a, at City Hall, we do have a door access system, however, the system and software is already outdated, and we would need to put money into it to bring it current. And then many buildings are lacking, uh, secu-, um, camera security as well. So, uh, with that, um, I do have Jimmy Brand, he's our IT consultant, um, here to help me talk about the concept that we are thinking of. Again, this kind of came about, uh, as we started discussing, um, you know, we have this new fire station going up, that's, that has the potential of having more public meetings there with the space that they have, they're gonna have available. City Hall as well, um, we do have events here currently, and we just don't have any way to monitor. I mean, we have little ability to monitor, um, on the weekends, the, the in and outs of, of the public using the facility. So we just want to make sure, um, that we're moving towards a, a more secure system overall. So, we just wanna make sure, um, that we're moving towards a, a more secure system overall, and knowing who's in our buildings at all times, in case something comes up. Um, so I do have the pictures, I don't know if you wanted to go over those, Jimmy. Um, again, very concept-based right now, and we're, we're thinking that this project will come around, come in around 35 to 40,000. Yeah, I have kinda where we think, based on like, where the access points are on, on our buildings, where we think cameras and door access, uh, scan cards would, would be the most beneficial. Yep.
All right, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members, my awesome city staff, as, as I was introduced, Jimmy Brand with Brand Networking, I have along with me Tom Burns, owner of Security and Sound. Tom and I go way back, a lot of my vendors use Tom for cabling and internet services, he does the lumber for Andy, and he's, uh, he's walked the streets of Watertown for many years, haven't you? Born and, born and raised here. So, and with Maggie, basically, we, we put together some, uh, some rough estimates, but I think today's discussion would be pretty impromptu, and just discuss, hey, where are the merits of door access, where's the merits of a security system, right? So, yes, we have a couple of quotes ranging anywhere from 35,000 to 90,000, so depending on how you slice it, this can be very expensive or, or affordable. So, and the reason, the last time I spoke in front of you guys, remember, we talked about having a network, right? So, we got new workstations, we got new servers, we put in our fiber ring, that was the real key to driving the whole door access security cameras. So, rather than having independent systems at Public Works, Wastewater, Fire, um, so we have one firewall now, one server, one fiber ring network. So, when Carver County came in and put this in for us, we now have this ring network, which makes my whole campus, my whole city on one local network. That's the beauty of this whole thing. So, if we put door access systems in, camera systems in, we can house a lot of the equipment here, and it can be shared. So, rather than having multiple systems, and I talked with Andy about this, we sat him at the fire meetings about their door access system, we want one vendor. You know, one vendor support all the stuff, the cameras, door access, otherwise, if you have the vendor from Wisconsin for this one, or somebody for the fire station and an independent one at Public Works, it gets expensive and it's hard to monitor. So, we're trying to get a system that's cohesive, and like you say, campus-based. So, the whole driving force of this was that fiber ring network, it's been in for kinda close to a year, right? And it's been operational, servers, workstations, everything's been working fabulous. So, for my door access systems, Maggie had said, right now, we have a system out of Wisconsin, which is upgradable, but right now, it's not operational. Yes, your keys work, but don't ask us to make another key, we can't do it, right? So, there is a cost to the upgrade, so we said, rather than paying for the upgrade cost, getting that one up and running and bringing all these fees in from Wisconsin, we wanted to see if we can get a local vendor, have a cohesive, uh, Public Works, Fire Station, City Door Access System. So, let's talk door access system first, may, you can probably bring up the city office. Right now, we have two access systems here, one is run by Carver County, and they have their codes, and those are the swipers outside the door, and the swipers inside your keypads are all from the other, uh, the other system. We wanna do is pull, pull them both out, just put in one, and give Carver County access, both with key cards and/or codes. So, there's a lot of ways you can swipe this, right, Tom? You could have fobs, you can have key cards, there's a lot of ways to do this. I think the beauty of the store access system is one, from a city council standpoint, from city, city staff, from police, fire, that they can come in and access this building at any one time, either with a, a fob or with a code. Not everybody's gonna be able to say on a fire call, they're gonna be able to go up and get their card, so it's nice to have a code, and that code will work here, it'll work at Public Works, it'll work at Fire Station. So, that's the beauty of this whole thing, we can have a nice cohesive unit with a code system, or for sake, you have a vendor, vendor needs to use the Fire Station or City Hall, you can give them a code that's good for eight hours. It expires, and the beauty of this, I think, is when you rent your building out a lot, you can just give them a code, say your code goes from 10:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, and after that, you can't get in. No more of this chasing around in a, in a blizzard to try to give them the key. You know, we're trying to get rid of the physical key aspect of this. So, there's a lot of merits to door access systems. And then, back to the camera systems, right now, we do not have a camera system anywhere in the city, and we know we're proposing the stuff at the Fire Station. So, the thing is to try to get a cohesive system where we can have one, uh, NVR recorder at City Hall, and use our network to transfer all the video images and stuff. So, every camera's on IP, so the cameras at Public Works, Wastewater, uh, anywhere, you could be at the parks, you could be at the baseball fields if you wanted to, Fire Station, we can access them anywhere on our network, and you can access them on your portable smart, smartphones, tablets, so the fire chief can look at his tablet or his phone, he can see his cameras, City Hall people can. So, in event of something, you say, I need, I got, I need some help, and you could say, well, I, I got the camera here, or if I need to change a code and you're at home and it's a blizzard, you can change the code for somebody to get them in and access, so. There's a lot of niceties to camera and door access systems, but in this day and age, with security, I think it's, it's kinda, it's our time to, to get security cameras in, I think so, especially at fire, especially at City Hall, when you rent the buildings out and everything. Um, they're affordable, um, I know we've got quotes as high as $90,000, I don't think we need to spend even half that, okay? There's a lot of different options, and Tom can explain what he's kinda proposing. So, without going into big budgets, we're kinda looking at the, the ballpark, big picture of, do we need a door access system upgrade, do we need a camera system upgrade? So, whether it's in this year's budgets, next year's budgets, I think it merits discussion, just to know that we need some security in the system. So, we put fire, uh, firewalls in, we put servers in, workstations, so we, we're there to protect your city's assets, right? And as you grow, you need to always protect those assets. And right now, I think the security camera system is the number one thing in this day and age, that it should be almost mandatory for every public building to have some sort of physical camera system in. So, with that in mind, I'm gonna bring Tom up, and he can discuss a little bit about the merits of the, the system.
Good evening. The, the cameras, I guess we could talk about first, that would be a, uh, all the cameras I, I bid are, um, uh, 4G 8 megapixel cameras with night vision, so, they'll work very good outside as well as inside, too. So, I'm trying to keep all the cameras, they're, they're turret-style cameras, they're not, they're not really big, they're, they're probably baseball-sized, a lot of technology in a small camera nowadays, so, um, and what Jim had said, too, we can, you can review any way you want, we typically, in a, I do the city of Orno, I do, uh, some work for Mound, I, I do a lot of, of, of different cities, they, they recommend at least 30 days of video storage, so I think I had 35 days on, on this, approximately. Um, so, if anything ever happens, you can, you can look back up to 35 days, so, um, but cameras are pretty self, you know, explanatory, we just, we, we wire everything, I don't believe in wireless, because, uh, two things hacking, and they're just not as reliable, especially in Minnesota outside, so, so all my cameras will be wired along with the access control. The access control also will have an audit trail on there, so if there ever is question about who came into what building at what time, you can look at the log on that, and that, that goes back to 90 days on that, so, uh, both systems are very, you know, we're, we're local, my office is in St. Bonnie, I grew up in Watertown, um, but, uh, we're, we're affordable, we're practical, I feel, as a company, when it comes to servicing, um, our warranties are, are great, there's a five-year warranty on, on the camera system and three-year on the access control. So, um, you know, I put some numbers together, I think we're in between the 35 and 40,000 range for, for everything, labor, parts and, and training and networking, so, um, any questions at all on, on the equipment or how it functions?
Not for me. And it's easy to add, add cameras in?
Yes.
And that's...
Yeah, the beauty of, is the way, the way the network is set up, even with the access controls, but what we do is we put, uh, we, we put what's called a POE switch, an Ethernet switch, and we snap the camera into that, then we find it back here and put it on the recorder, so it's...
Let me explain that with Tom, too, is that when we did this fiber ring, I went, we put...
When we put this fibering network in, we actually put, uh, physical switches and POE switches at each location, so the Wastewater, at Fire, at, at the City Hall, so we have all the switches in play, all they gotta do is plug a camera in, that's easy. So, we've already have all the infrastructure set up, we've got the network, we've got the speed, we've got everything we need to do, we just have to plug in equipment. So, we pretty much set this up for success already, it's just a matter of just pulling the string on a budget number, that's kinda where it's at. Like I say, the other quotes we got, that the other vendor had done, worked for me at the city of Maple Plain, and they've ran their fire department and some of their door access systems, but their quote came in at about 89 grand. So, I'm not saying they're identical products, um, but when it comes to the same number of cameras, there's six cameras here, three at the fire, two here, one here, we gave them the same specs, same number, same everything, it just depends upon, like I say, labor and types of equipment.
And we're close, this is, you know, I, we tried to bid to win, and a job this close to me, it's important to get, it says it's, you know, all my employees are in this area too, so...
Do you recommend, like, I know you guys had the key fobs or cards, what if you just did code? I mean, is it, is it the same price to have all of, all of those, just 'cause...
You can do, they actually have a, a reader keypad that you could use a fob or a code. Uh, they're a little bit more, they weren't quoted, they're a little bit more money. The, the theory on keypads, why not to use them, is somebody looking over somebody's shoulder, and then they've got the code, so, or they're easy to give out versus a fob. Now, again, there's an audit trail, but it's the only thing that I'm against when it comes to, to keypads, is those codes get out, they seem to, you know, someone gives somebody a code, or you got a bunch of kids that are looking over someone's shoulder, so we, I, I tend to do more fobs and cards, is what we do.
I would say make sure the fire department would have codes, because...
That, that's exactly what I was coming up to say, when Andy and I talked, when we looked at all the budgets and stuff, we looked at the multiple readers, because we want cards for people who can carry cards or fobs, but for, for volunteer firemen who come racing in and stuff, I, I can't have my card at home, or I forgot underneath the seat, whoever, you need a code, and these things are accessed consistently, so we need multiple, the readers that do codes and cards. We have those at all the other fire stations, too, it's the same way, and for vendors like myself who come in, we have codes and attracts you and stuff, but I agree that codes, unless they're maintained and monitored, they can get out of hand sometimes, but for these small cities, it's, really hasn't been really a problem.
What about City Hall? You know, the card would be the same as the keys, tracking down a card that you gave to somebody, so...
I, I'm in agreement, I think the key code, especially for the rentals, makes so much sense to me. You say, geez, I'm at home, like, or Maggie's somewhere and she can't be somewhere, I can dial into my server remotely, which they all have access to, and they can say, I'll give you a code to get in, or, or if that code didn't work, I'll give you a new code.
Those codes would be like four to eight hours, kinda like hotel...
You can set them for whatever you want.
Cars are always set for a certain time.
One hour, eight hours, two days.
Sure.
Exactly right, these codes. I agree, I think the codes are, are important, especially for City Hall and the rentals and Fire Stations. Except for that, then I would always like to say, I like the, a physical card, though, for staff, if they can maintain a physical card, but I like the key cards that have both, you know?
Those are just my, like, thoughts on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll adjust that, then, I can quote the, to show you the difference of cost versus, uh, basically, it's a, a reader slash keypad, is what it is, so...
Can we use existing pads, right here, did we talk about when we did the walkthroughs? Can we use these pads?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
No, no.
I, I like the idea. I think this is the way to go.
Sure.
Now, I haven't been through the pack, and we didn't, we had a little technical difficulty, so we didn't get them till late today, so I don't know where we're talking on the cameras. I, just some hesitation I would have is putting cameras, ever, I don't see a need for some of that. I do see a need at City Hall here, um, you know, it's a public place, um, some safety up for the front desk, you know, shining up, uh, or, or looking onto the, the front window, but as far as at the wastewater treatment plant, or, I mean, we don't have problems there, I don't see a need for some of that at this time, at the Fire Station, I don't see a need for them, I, you know, knowing who's coming in and out of the building, to me, is more important.
No, I agree, Mr. Mayor, in that, but, and I looked at, we looked at the cost of the cameras, 'cause a lot of the investment is at the NVR level and at City Hall, and the cameras themselves to plug in aren't that much, and if you're doing a low voltage wiring now, especially with a Fire Station being built, it's easy to add the cables right now. And, and the real thing on security is, we just wanna make sure we have the points of entrance, like, uh, the wastewater, uh, we want the gate, you know, if somebody comes in the gate, not to say somebody's gonna jump in the pond, right? But at Fire, we just had the three corners, we're not doing any inside, it's mostly an outside sequence, um, and if you look at the, you look at the rest of it...
For what reason? Is it for break-ins, or is it for...
It's vandalism.
Vandalism, mostly vandalism is just security and people, and I think the real...
They're a great deterrent, you know, um, so it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not really what, you know, we, we don't know what, you know, in what case it's gonna be, but it's typically vandalism, it's, they're not gonna, probably nothing they're gonna steal, it's gonna, what, what do they do to, and then it'd be nice to have a, a shot, a good shot at somebody, knowing if there's troublemakers out there.
Are we talking just buildings, Maggie? Or do you have wells on there, lift stations?
Not, not yet, we don't have those, they have the fiber yet, but we didn't put those on our fiber ring yet, so there's a connection fee and stuff like that, so if we wanna do the wells, or the lift station, or the ballpark, whatever, but I think, as Tom said, the deterrence, if people know there's cameras, there's a lot of times, things don't happen, if people know that there's physical cameras. But in this day and age, with vandalism and all that stuff, you just need to be able to say, I've got a camera system, and these things are gonna sit there, run 24/7 for years, they just don't go out, I mean, they pretty much last a long, long time. So, it's, again, it's just the cost of your infrastructure for the safety and security of, uh, of the city assets, that's it.
Yeah, it's just, there's a couple, like, two cameras at the wastewater, three at maintenance, uh, what's this, this water plant, I have one across the street over here, there's one camera there.
Water treatment, yeah.
Yeah, so it wasn't a lot of cameras.
Okay.
I, I propose a 16-channel recorder to start with, we can always add to that, you can just put another one right up top, in the future, which would sit over here, so, I think total cameras between Fire Station and here was 16, I, I, so...
Well, I mean, look at the compo site, we had some issues at not being manned, so then we did invest in some cameras, just to start, and that hopefully is a deterrent. I know cameras can be a deterrent, I know that Watertown had a break-in to their, one of their plants this summer, but, you know, so do you wait for something to happen, and then go, I really wish I had a camera? If, if you're already doing it, you know, if we already wanna do the keypads and, you know, change that style, and we already did the infrastructure, it might not make, it makes sense, and I think adding a couple cameras isn't really that, that's not the expensive part, it's the infrastructure of the actual, like, the box that holds the 16 cameras. Right.
Are there, um, grants out there for doing these kinds of things, uh, because they're a wastewater treatment, I mean, does Homeland Security have grants we can tap into? I, I would assume they do.
I could look into that, yeah.
I know they do, 'cause Orno, it was a grant, they, um, don't know what grant it was, but I know there is some money out there for that, so, I'm curious for the city's...
Yeah, if we can, if we can look into that, I think that would help.
I think one more comment, too, is the reason why we're proposing this now, and, you know, when I brought this up last year, said, be prepared, we're gonna probably look at camera systems next year, once the fiber ring gets in, we can now can implement door access camera systems a lot easier, uh, but we have a Fire Station being built, they're gonna be putting in a door access system, they have doors already made for it, they're putting in camera systems, they have something on the budget, I talked to Andy about it, we don't know how much of this comes out of their budget, it amount for, for the building fund, so we have to discuss those merits as far as how much already is in there for door access and cameras. But if we put independent systems there and independent system here, then we're kinda defeating purposes of having a campus-wide system, right? So, the real start is City Hall, 'cause that's where all the stuff's gonna get housed, so the NVRs, the door access systems, therefore, we'd have to almost start here, and then just bring those guys in. So, that's the reason why we, we'd wanna get started at City Hall before, 'cause we know we have to do it at the Fire Department, it's, it's gonna be mandatory for their keypads and everything. It'd be nice to have one vendor, one system, one campus. So, I don't know if you're on budgets for this year or not, if we can pull some of that off, it's great, if we can't, then we'll have to figure out something, and at least from a low voltage standpoint, we can have everything ready at the Fire Station and implement it after the first year on a budget year, whatever works. But the real key is for the cable guys to get in, to make sure all the runs go into the door jams, make sure the cameras get located before they start running, you know, ceiling tiles and sheet rock and stuff like that, so, and that's the real, real key. So, the, the low voltage thing is more important at the Fire, the camera system installs here and the cables, isn't that difficult in these buildings, especially Public Works and Wastewater, if you have to run a conduit or something in the ceiling somewhere, it's not a big deal in those buildings, so, we don't see it as, you know, really having to really expend a lot of money in cabling at this point, so, and like I say, all the switches and stuff are already installed, it's just plug and play.
Yeah, I like the idea, I like pursuing this, getting in final numbers, looking at our budget, um, definitely looking at grants.
Yeah. And, and just remember, too, there's, there's delays in installation, there's delays in procuring equipment, getting installed, getting on schedule, so, I mean, could we have had this discussion back in February, probably? Um, I'm not saying we're late, I'm just saying that we should at least discuss the merits of it, at least get the Fire Station up and running on all their low voltage cabling, so when we plug it in, we can just plug them in. So, the real key for, the Fire Station, for me, is getting all the cabling run.
I'd hate to put in something, 'cause you have to, to open it, and then be like, well, we're gonna just retrofit it, or change it later.
Yeah, and we've already discussed with the vendors, and the cabling vendors and low voltage guys at Fire, and all their vendors in the meetings, that we, we already know what we need to do over there, and a lot of that stuff is already included in with their multimedia and everything, so we already know what to do, and I think that's already in their budgets, the cabling, it's just a matter of who hooks up the cameras and who hooks up the door access system, so, but we already know where they're going.
Okay. Keep, keep looking into it, start getting some of those final numbers.
Yeah, and they know how to get ahold of us, they need more quotes or more accurate, but the reason why we drew the pictures is we thought, on our walkthroughs, we walked through with the fire chief, we walked through with city people, we walked through and say, what would you do? Walked through with, uh, Public Works, where would you want it? Public Works doesn't need big system, they just want one access on the door, and just cameras on the gates and the outside. And it, it's really more of an outside physical security, it's not inside and snooping on people, it's just a physical outside security. And, and what do I, you know, for accidents or whatever, I mean, somebody could run the gate over, you know? But like you said, if we don't have cameras, I mean, right now, Carver County's just getting body cams in, right? So, they're just implementing that. In fact, I have to get some cables hooked up for, for your guy here tonight, so.